Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, February 9, 2015. I had a 5:30 PM start for this caucus. My clock on my cellphone is showing 5:41. They have a roll call for the commencement of this caucus. Councilperson Kajuski.
Here.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Here.
Councilperson Bajana.
Yeah.
Councilperson Young.
Here.
Councilperson Osborne.
Here.
Councilperson Coleman.
Here.
Councilperson Rivera.
Yep.
Councilperson Waterman.
Here.
And Council President LaBarro.
Here.
We have all nine members in attendance at 5:41 PM, and I'm going to turn it over to the Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Councilman Bajana, do you want to kick us off? You have an announcement to make.
All right. Rolando and Pam, first of all, actually, you people should get the credit for what's going on, and Robert Burns, who's not here tonight. Posted on the walls are thank you letters and artwork from one of the grammar schools that visited City Hall. Our Lady of Chester Hove, third grade class, the kids come here, a lot of the kids come here from grammar school, and Robert Burns, myself, Pam, Rolando, or anybody else, Joyce, Diane, speak to the kids, and they give them like a little lesson on government in Jersey City. And it's fascinating because when you speak to these kids in third grade, they're much smarter than what you think. I think they know much more than the parents. All right, Robert Burns, Robert Burns has been working with students and giving them civic joint activity. We continue, we continue the tradition with city council members, but Robert Burns is not available. The kids enjoy mock elections, I better put on my reading glasses, elections, sitting in city council seats and voting on mock issues, such as a cellphone and video games three Saturdays. And I'm not kidding when I say, I ask some of these kids some questions about politics and whether it's on city, state, or federal, and the answers that came back were totally shock, shocking, because they are smart. And I don't know if it's TV, whether it's the internet, or whatever, but it's amazing. So, just want to say the kids were great. That's all their stuff up on the wall there. And Robert Burns has been doing it through several classes, I'm sorry. He's been doing it through several classes, and I think, Sean, you were involved with a couple of them, right?
Yeah.
So...
On behalf of Robert Burns, thank you very much.
Clerk's office for doing a great job, and of course, our council staff, Pam and Jasmine Desiree, everybody working together on that teamwork. One more announcement, Danny, you want to make an announcement on the...
So, we have this nationwide program called JAM, PS number three, you know, they're going to be here tomorrow at the city council meeting. I'm wondering if we could give them like a minute or so, so they can do their Eye of the Tiger dance, and we could see, we could see them perform. It's going to be interesting.
What time?
There is. There is. It's one of the highest, the highest that's been approved. Actually, the resolution is 15-100, 10Z10.
It's all right.
We'll start the regular business.
She's here for resolution number...
Where are you? Let's find you. Millennium, the grant is on. Remember that? I'm trying to find it.
That's 10Z2, resolution 15-100.
No, no, that's Qs.
I heard you say Millennium, that's on my right, too.
Is that 10Z4?
There is. That's, that's correct.
Well, let's, W. Mayor say the board. It's 10Z4, resolution 15-102, resolution authorizing an exemplary inspecifiable service contract with Millennium Strategies LLC to provide grant services to the City of Jersey City. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I'm, I'm here to recommend this resolution. I think that we had a very good year this year. We were, we ended the year pretty strong with the $2.25 million grant from Bloomberg, which represents a $750,000 grant for each of the three years. We also recently received Major League Baseball to complete the field at Berry Lane Park. We had the Champs Grant, and also the half a million dollar grant for Project Safe Neighborhood. But I think what's really important is that we've been pleased with the thoroughness of the work, that it has allowed us to build stronger alliances with nonprofit partners. So, whenever, I know we shared some information earlier about the grants that come in, if a grant is not pursued by the city, we don't leave it there. And this week alone, we have referred grants to the Urban League, we've referred grants to special improvement districts, we refer grants to the library, to the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency. So, it's really allowed us to be more effective on city grants, but also more helpful to other agencies and nonprofits throughout the city, so that they secure additional funding.
Councilman Bajana? 10Z4.
10Z4.
There's two things. This was put out for bid, and there was another company that came in with a lower bid. The company that's getting the higher bid, is there a political connection in Bergen County with this?
Good answer.
Somebody said to me, it's a congressman that's part of this company, that's so, and I want to know why we didn't take the lower bid.
It's evaluated by a committee, not just based on price, but based on several criteria that determines, you know, size of clientele they've had before, you know, based on prior experience. There's a host of stuff that was in the RFP that allowed some flexibility, so you don't always take the lower price, because you don't know what you're getting with a lower price.
You know, every time we come up with something, it's all, we got a lower bid, let's not take the higher bid. And then, as I said, somebody asked, are there political connections with why we're taking the higher bid? And we should know the answer.
Well, I can't speak, I mean, I...
Yeah, I don't know about the political connections.
I don't know the political connections, and wouldn't speak to that.
There was, there was a committee of, of professionals that reviewed it, and that was their recommendation.
Do we have the committee report or anything?
Yeah, there's a, I don't have the report, but I know it was the CFO, Ms. Elizabeth Castillo was the second, I forget who the third committee member was, was it the committee, it might have been Sarah. So, there are three people, three management employees that reviewed the committee, reviewed the proposal, and that was their recommendation.
Councilman Young?
Yes. This Millennium Communication Company, I thought was an IT-oriented company.
Separate, separate.
Separate company, no relation to the one that's on the agenda for OEM later in the process. Now, totally different companies.
Very familiar with each other.
And you're right.
The other one is an IT-based company, this one is strictly a consulting business.
Yeah. This.
So now, my concern is that this Millennium Company, actually, almost none without bid, without public bid, they got the almost $271,000 consulting business with City of Jersey City, Z2, G3, G4. And then now, Councilman Rich Boja brought up the issue, they concerned that G4, this company is even profitable, you know, it's a high bid, but they got the business, so I'm wondering why.
Z2 and Z3 are totally separate issues. They're based on GSA awards using USC Homeland Security dollars for the Office of Emergency Management. This is a totally separate procurement process, separate procurement contract. This is the consulting services for grant purposes only. The other stuff was IT-related for the Office of Emergency Management.
When they pay $140,000 for consulting fee, you know, we got to expect what kind of grant they're going to bring to the City of Jersey City. When we pay consulting fee based on percentage of grant, what does, we don't care about how much they bring to grant, it just we pay $140,000. I'd like to know, when we pay $140,000, based on what?
They pay hourly rate based on their time assisting the grants office.
Right, and now, even though we pay $140,000, you know, they calculate with hourly charge, whatever we call, but end of day, when they bring a grant to Jersey City, if we nothing, what we going to do?
So, if I, if I could say so.
My, my full-time job, when I'm not a councilman, is I'm the grants administrator for New Jersey City University, so I can tell you that in this, this industry and business, that asking people to work on a, on a percentage basis, it's, it's kind of frowned upon within this industry to, to ask folks to, excuse me?
It's now illegal.
It's illegal. There you go. It's illegal.
I just, I just want to clarify that, I don't think the two entities have the same address.
They're not, one's in Oldham, New Jersey, the other one's in East...
Standover.
One is called Millennium Strut.
And one's called Millennium Communications.
They're not related at all.
So, the confusion's, you know, understandable, given the closeness in the name, but let's...
This company, do they have any history record about what kind of grant they bring to the Jersey City of Jersey City?
Absolutely, and we shared it with, I gave them to the business administrator earlier, so every... Right, there's a list.
We'll make copies and share it with all the council.
Make us feel comfortable.
Total funding awarded, 1,320,000. Looks like there were more than...
They have 7.9...
Almost eight million dollars in applications. Currently in progress, pending is, oh, I don't have a summary total on that, but...
Does it show year over year?
This is just for 2014.
Yeah, they can make it, but I'm not sure it shows year over year. Yeah, there's only one year, because we had a, the city had a different grant before, consultant before.
Sure, I would expect that we could, yes. Right.
$1,000 of money towards, you know, so that's what we want to know, okay?
Just keep in mind that council meeting is tomorrow, not Wednesday night. So, can we get copies for the ones tonight? Okay, no other questions?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
They have no number on it, is it just one resolution? The last two?
This one that came out with no designation, I got it kind of late, it's cooperative. Should only have one that doesn't have a designation. We might have got two and made a mistake. Sorry about that. That's going to be 10Z13, resolution 15-111. That'll be the last reso added, and Mr. Magr was here to speak on that and a number of resolutions.
Can we move on to the next item?
Mr. Donnelly?
Come on down, it's the press meeting. Do you want to be direct, or first?
I was able to manage them, actually. I'm probably going to get in trouble, though, because my wife had to come home early. Yeah. 362 Summit, which is actually second reading. That's why I figured we'd...
15-006.
Second reading on 362 Summit?
Just my concern is that they're developing a provide that they're partnering for city municipal court workers in that area, 18 months.
Yes, that is happening.
Do they have any plan to aim 18 months later?
We're, we're working on, first of all, first of all, we're working on looking at the lot behind the municipal parking, parking lot and seeing what we can do there, and we have 18 months to kind of solve this problem. We're also looking at other air, other spots in the area where we can do something. This is a prime spot that will help us redevelop the neighborhood in a way that hasn't, hasn't seen, you know, the Journal Square redevelopment plan, Journal Square 2060, is an important redevelopment plan, and we have one major project going on with Journal Squared. This is kind of on the edge of the plan, and this helps us move the rest of the plan forward and really change a neighborhood that needs this help right there, and that's why, and that's why we're doing this.
How many units they going to build?
I'm sorry, say...
How many units, apartment?
The developers here? 65, I thought.
Any parking space they going to have?
The, yeah. Remember, we have, we have maximums, not minimums, in the Journal, in the Journal Square, in the Journal Square redevelopment plan.
How many units you say, of one? I'm saying, 65 units, but the Journal Square redevelopment plan, they require...
They require...
Minimum and maximum, how they want to park?
They require maximum number of spaces per unit, and that, actually, I'm drawing a blank on the, the number is. It's either half a space or one space per, per unit.
They need 30 parking space, no?
The maximums. Yeah, because this is a transit-oriented area, the idea is for people to move in here without cars, and that, and that has been very successful in other transit-oriented developments, and we, and we expect it to be successful here as well. So, 30 is the, so 30 is the, 30 is the maximum. There is no minimum. And that has, and that's part of the plan.
The most council members aware that have a parking issue in that area, you know what I'm saying? And if the gentleman developer put in the lease agreement, no...
Actually, I would, I would argue with you that there are, I would argue with you, because I like to argue with you, but I would argue with you that, that there isn't a parking problem, because one of the, one of the arguments we get all the time up here is because of the number of spaces in the municipal lot, and it's not properly functioning at the moment, that the parking lots in the area are, are being hurt, because there are several parking lots in the area that are less than half-full on any given business day.
See, let me clarify this problem, parking of that area, yes, is a bad, but when we build 65 units without parking, it's going to make worse. That's why my concern, number one.
This is part of the, the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan. This is part of the plan that we set forth. So, the developer is following along with the plan that we have set forth, that the city has set forth, that the planning department has designed, that the council people have set forth and approved, and this has been, went through a process. This is probably one of the best-vetted redevelopment plans in the state of New Jersey, and is actually, actually a model. You go anywhere, you go anywhere in the state of New Jersey, they talk about this Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan.
Now, second issue is my concern is that JCRA will sell the land to developer, it's $1.14 million, correct?
That is correct.
When I see that a lot of resolutions, City of Jersey pay rent to JCRA, whatever we, I mean, the leased space owned by JCRA, we pay rent, correct? Yes, we pay rent, so...
But, but not here. That's, that's completely unrelated.
So now...
Completely unrelated.
Okay, unrelated, but let me ask you this one, I want to clear that where we stand. Own any, the whole area, right? They're building owned by JCRA, and the City of Jersey leased a space, and we pay rent to JCRA.
You pay rent to the joint, you pay rent, it's sep, completely separate, I've already said that, but it's also, it's also a joint venture. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's because of how we structured that lease and the space that we, what we were doing with it, because there was a debt on the property. It's completely different in other instances where JCRA manages city-owned property on our behalf and our request. So, for example, this parking lot that is looking to be optioned out for development, it's completely different purposes that's happening here.
We own it outright.
No, it's not just that we own it outright, but although that's an important distinction, but this property was given over to JCRA for the specific purpose of trying to target it for development, because we're trying to revitalize the neighborhood. And there's a series of properties that JCRA owns on our behalf to try and option for development, because it's in the best interest of the neighborhood and the plan that has been placed in that area. Very different purposes.
So, I understand different purposes, but my, my next question is that JCRA received the money, $1.14 million, from the developer, then I believe that is, they insert, I mean, that JCRA instead of holding the $1.14 million, they fund this to the City of Jersey City.
It will, it will immediately. Once we close, the money will be immediately transferred to the city.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Dave, I just want to tell you something. You said the expression, "These people won't have cars." I'm not objecting to, you know, but I sat in on the Newport meetings back in the 70s, and these people that are moving into these buildings will not have children. They said that 100 times. Guess where most of the children are? Where the schools are overcrowded. So, I mean, don't use that as an expression, because we never know. I guarantee you, most of them are going to have cars.
We kind of discussed, I sent you an email before this meeting started, it was relating to the property to be auctioned off for affordable housing purposes? Is that...
Yes.
And I had raised a question about, well, I know we're going out to public auction, the idea again that the redevelopment agency has certain powers, maybe the housing authority, instead of just taking the best bid, I mean, given that you have certain powers that might allow us to get a better developer with better experience and capabilities and so forth, rather than just go out to auction and maybe get somebody who may make a better financial offer, but doesn't have the capabilities to develop affordable housing.
Who bids on that has to display those abilities, right?
They do, yeah.
I mean, there's a...
As opposed to JCRA or Jersey Housing Authority, they could, they could get the best developer.
So, you're saying instead of going, instead of going to auction, it might make sense to, to make it a different type of project and get the best possible developer?
Yeah.
As opposed to the most amount of money?
As opposed to the most amount of money.
It's something we can explore.
Presented by now. I think there's some restrictions, because community development dollars are involved.
Community development dollars, community development block grant dollars are definitely involved. I, I haven't worked specifically on this project, but I am somewhat familiar with it. I mean, one of... Sorry. One of the things that we could do, I, I would hate to hold up, I would hate to hold up the auction or sale, but one of the things we could do after the, the seller is awarded the, the property, one of the things you might be able to do, actually, if you were to change and, council, maybe you, Jeremy, maybe we could add a line in here that they have to enter, because I believe it is in a redevelopment area, and if we make them enter into a redevelopment agreement, because it's a redevelopment area, I can then watch over, it's not, 268-FM, it's not, it's just outside, it ends, that's the area we've been talking about adding. Yeah, storms, yeah.
My question is, why don't we go out to auction? Because that doesn't give us a guarantee that the person is going to be able to fulfill.
I thought it was a redevelopment area. It, it is not, so we, we have, we have no authority. We cannot do it, we have no authority.
At, at what their plan was with auctioning it. But just to be clear, if it goes at the auction, it will be auctioned with the affordability requirement. That requirement attaches, and, and so, we're not going to lose, in fact, we're going to end up with usable, affordable units, if we can get the property sold.
The units, they have to assume the two home mortgages.
Yeah, in the bid...
After the experience, the... So, we concerned about the quality. The person that has the most money to win the, to bid the highest may not have the, the ability to, to rehab the part of the building, you understand what I'm saying?
They looked at all the strategies before, for now.
You know, this is actually make me very upset as a taxpayer. Since 2004 and 2009, we give them $450,000 loan, and we're going to give to whoever bidder by auction, we're going to give another $50,000, but now...
In the resolution, you got, the $50,000 was taken out.
Yeah, let me finish first. You know, so, at the time, I see that guy personally, his building, 2004, their building's market value not that much, actually. I can guarantee, if we buy in the height, seven years upon three street, I mean, three street building, I mean, the units in Jersey's height, it's not even priced at $400,000. But how the hell this city gave them loan, almost $450,000? I couldn't understand. I mean... 2004, they gave to them $300,000. Listen to me, 2009, we gave to them another $150,000. Total $450,000, they're worth maybe $200,000 building. And now, this project failed. I'd like to know as accountability, who was the charge at the time to give the loan to this company? And that guy still maybe walk in the City of Jersey City?
We'll have to look into that, and it's a valid question.
So now, my next question is to ask the BA, what kind of balance is left that we gave the loan, almost half, $450,000? What is the current balance of the loan now?
Off my head.
Okay, so we'll have to provide you with that information as well. Any other questions, councilmen?
Now, because of that, reason I'm asking that, their unit will be sold, the rent, around the $739 rent. I don't know what kind of balance they have, the loan. If you collect the $739 rent, seven units, around the $5,020 a month, times 12, less than, around the $60,000. Are really their $6,000 income after pay expenses, they're really able to pay back the loan, what they owe?
Yeah, it does, no, it does matter, it's a home loan, councilman, because the goal is not to get repaid, the goal is to get affordable housing. So, so, so we're not worried about repayment, we're...
Fund by taxpayers' dollars in the United States.
The affordability conditions work, we don't get repaid, we get affordable housing.
Capital O, capital M, capital E, not home as in a home, but home loan, it's...
Affordable conditions. Yeah.
When they come from the grant, their grant come from the taxpayers' dollars. Let me make a clear. But it's okay. So, I just want to know that they current the balance of the loan, how much they left, okay? And also, I think almost six months ago, when we have replacement, we asked some small sheet attached, what is the difference between what we got, what we get, you know? So, please, we got to make sure that replacement must have to provide some brief information to what is different between them, okay? Thank you.
Right? Yes. Thank you. Starting with...
10T?
10T.
10T.
Resolution of bids. Yes, so you got batteries? You're on, Director. Yes.
Yes, so you got batteries?
You're on, Director.
Well, we, we have newer vehicles, and we need the bid specs to be in line with the newer vehicles, and that's, that's why we're asking for rejection. We have a, a new bid specs, and we're going to have a pre-bid conference, so we're in line with what we need.
Since then, some new vehicles are coming to the fleet, they're taking vehicles off the fleet, so the old specs had the old numbers on it, so we want to put the more current part numbers on there. So, the bid... So the bid is accurate.
The automotive director actually created a binder, so all the bid parts match up the newer vehicles. So we, we are very in tune with what we need.
Councilman, you?
Yes.
The last year, what we say that value of the perks of tires, battery, as you know, in the base of name brands and the prices are very different, very you know what I'm saying? So when we put in the just specification of their battery and they can print that their, uh, uh, lowest price, but maybe quality is not there, you know what I'm saying? And one guy gives quotation of C W Jersey based on, you know, good quality name brand.
Okay.
The other guy can put in the bid by low quality or, you know what I'm saying? So low brand, whatever, non-brand, then automatically, if we talk a lowest bid, you know, the non-brand will be take over. So my concern
Has to be improved equal, councilman. Has to be the, what's in the spec or improved equal. So has to be comparable batteries.
The base of brand name, price is very varied. I realize that even tires and the battery, so how are we going to limit that problem then?
About specs? I mean, specs are very specific, you know, when it comes to the parts, the model number of what the actual part is. Identify the brake pad and the shoes and, you know, the transmission parts, whatever. With regards to the batteries, they'll identify
64-month life, 48-month life, so, you know, you would be able to compare it then.
And also, all this battery, we got come with warranty, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
Same with the tires. I mean, it's so many thousand miles with tire, that would be the same comparison.
But not only by documentation.
Yes.
I was just gonna say, I hope we don't do it by brand. Okay, good. Louis Vuittons, I bet you aren't worth what they sell for.
T U Z? Do you have no other questions? You ready to start?
W.
10W?
T 20.
20 scrubber?
Yep.
W, W.
This is the T 20 scrubber, which is being purchased for our new automotive warehouse, which we share with the Incinerator Authority. It's a scrubber to keep the floor clean. Um, it's vital to our operation there. Uh, we have a brand-new facility, we want to keep it looking pristine, and that's why this is a necessity.
Questions, anyone?
Hearing none?
10X?
10X?
State contract.
For heavy-duty vehicles, correct.
Maintenance and repair.
Yes.
We have my country $170,000. So this company provide service last year also?
Yes, they did.
Okay, but let me ask you this one then. Okay, what kind of dollar amount did they provide service C W Jersey last year?
Last year, we spent $166,000 in 2014 for the services. That's why we, we have $170,000 budget.
Okay.
Okay. No other questions, I'm going to ask the next.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Keep the good work.
Michelle?
Who?
Michelle? Yeah, Michelle? You want to, do your thing?
She's here on, I have 10T, it's resolution 15074. 10B as in void. Resolution introducing and approving the 2015 budget of the Jackson Hill Main Street Special Improvement District and directing the city clerk to publicly advertise the budget, 10B as in void. To advertise the budget and schedule a public hearing and directing the tax assessor to repair an assessment rule of properties within the district based upon the budget. Any questions? Any questions on the resolution?
Yes. 10D. Thank you, good job first, you know, I know it's not easy to operate, you know, SID is, is a tough job. You know, I was a president 20 years, you know, so I'm very aware that, you know, I heard that you did such a great job. But my major concern is that now assessment, you put your $212,000 and your expense come out $248,000. So you are short $348,000 a show. So $348,000 come from the surplus with the less. You have 46? 35. 35,000, $35,825, correct? Okay, we said 36. So now, my question is that this $35,000 come from the surplus for last year.
Yes.
So if you wrong, you aside this way, the, the way you're looking for, problem is that probably two years later, you're going to have a major increase aside the tax in your area.
Well, no, if you look at the previous year and our budget from 2013, we have been methodically bringing the budget down to match the actual assessment. We certainly do not want to increase the assessment for the property owners at this time. Or in the future, preferably.
So we are surplus now, I mean, the, uh, is surplus for, yeah, now, as of today.
Can I open your call, the actual number, it's last I reviewed it, approximately 80,000 dollars.
One of the problems is most of the expenses The Attorney General Rose, President of the Jackson Hill Main Street Management Corp. Um, it's, I believe it's around 80,000. One of the issues, and as you know with SIDs, is that the monies and expenses aren't realized in the same year. Like, for instance, right now, it's, we're still getting monies from 2014, it's still outstanding monies that are being collected from late paid taxes. So that's one of the issues. But one other thing to the point of the, the gap of 35, 825. Um, we are now a 501(c)(3). So one of the, initially, one of the ways we were going to go after those dollars was to solicit funds. We didn't have the means to do that before. Now that we are a 501(c)(3), we can go after it. So it's hope that once we get to a point where that gap has to be realized, that, you know, we can go to banks and other financial institutions using the 501(c)(3) to figure it.
Thanks. Any other questions?
No, no, no.
Thank you.
Carter. I'm sorry, one item?
One item?
Yeah, one item, okay.
He's got the
3C?
3C?
First reading. 3C. Wardens 15014. Colgate redevelopment plan. The amendments.
These amendments are for one project, one property. Um, 99 Hudson is the common address, Hudson, Grand, York, and Green Street is that, that block. It's a parking lot today. This would allow the building proposed for that site to be 990 feet tall. The current zoning is, allows 675 feet tall. That was for a building that was designed for Merrill Lynch about 15 years ago that will not be built. The site now is owned by China overseas, and they're proposing to actually build a less number of units. There'd be 760 units, there are zones for almost 1,000, 998 or something. Uh, they're, they're looking at a condominium building, which is good. And then on the, the, the planning board approved this the other night, recommended adoption by council. Um, the other, there's a whole bunch of little housekeeping items in here, which we don't want to go through. Essentially, it's for the extra height to go 990 feet maximum. Um, that's only one tower, the planning board amended it, said, say that you can only, if you're going to go that high, you can only do one tower. The rest of the building can be any higher than the parking garage, which is about eight stories. And the parking garage on Green Street will be lined with apartment buildings, apartments. So you won't see the garage on Green Street, that's the facing historic neighborhood. The other thing we've done is increased the amount of open space that they must provide on their block. Um, and reduce, there's something weird in the Colgate redevelopment plan, nobody else, no other plan has it. There's limited accessibility open space, which is accessible only 50% of the time. It's kind of weird, nobody else has done this, I don't even know why that was done. It goes back to the 80s. But it's kind of like for sidewalk cafes on private property. So we've taken that down on this block, only 15%, which would be where they'll put their seating for their outdoor cafe, which is going to be very nice. Um, and the other thing we've done is we've removed the prohibition on on-street parking. Colgate was envisioned to be no parking on the street and big streets. But you walk around down there, there's no traffic down there, so, you know, there's so, there's so few cars, there's really no reason to have that prohibition anymore. So we'd like to have a study done to look at putting meters on the street and free parking at night. It'd be good for the businesses, I don't think anybody's going to argue against it. And it actually makes pedestrians safer, because having that car parked along the curb does give you some protection from a speeding car goes out of control, hops the curb, and takes you out. So we'll get around to that with the parking utility, we've talked to Mary about doing it in the past. Um, this would make it legal to do if the council decides to do it, it just makes it possible. Councilman?
My question is, sidewalk cafe. Why does every single, all side, most of sidewalk cafes downtown Jersey City? Why we can't get sidewalk cafe in Ward C, Ward B, Ward A? I know there's restaurant, I would want to do it, Ward D as well. All, everything sidewalk cafe is downtown, downtown, downtown. I got Abbeys in my ward, Ward, Mallory Avenue, we had three bar closed, and I have only Abbeys there now. He's dying to get sidewalk cafe, he can't get it. And here we go, for the sidewalk cafe downtown, you got to do something, though.
What, what, what would he have to do to get the sidewalk cafe down there at Abbeys?
You've applied to the Division of Commerce, apply for the permit, I forget, it's 200 bucks, 250, or something like that. And you have a drawing that shows where the tables will go, because there's a minimum sidewalk you have to preserve. And provided it's own for, you can only do a sidewalk cafe in a commercial district. If you, if you have a variance or grandfather, I don't know what the district is, Abbeys down on Mallory and Fisk or something like that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. It might, if it's not zoned for, for bars, he'd have to get variance to increase. Yeah.
Council? I'm not familiar with that area, actually, honestly.
But you, I never seen the 95th Street building in Jersey City, so I try to create to some imagination how it looks like, we'll be writing over. But this amendment, excuse me, do they buy, I mean, that they have some community inputs, is there?
Oh, yes.
And the council?
Yes.
Yes.
That's two months, is it all where there, right?
Several meetings with the Polosuk Neighborhood Association, yes.
All neighbor groups is happy with that, right?
Okay.
Yep.
No questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is, uh, I'm sorry, not the, do you have one, or?
She has one. Yeah, she has one.
One?
Yeah.
You have several, right? Come on. I don't know, which item are you?
Z5.
Z5, resolution 15103, it's a resolution authorizing the City of Jersey City Office of Centralized Grants and Office of Cultural Affairs to apply for funds from Sustainable Jersey, Sustainable Jersey Small Grants Program. It's 10Z5.
All right.
Is the thing?
This is a grant of $10,000 from Sustainable Jersey that will allow for cultural mapping, which would, um, we could hire an outside company to assist us in providing a clear house for all cultural info, such as location of monuments, statues, murals, all of the public art, historic buildings. Sorry, artists, artisans, venues, community organizations, and events. So it's basically encompassing anything cultural or historic in Jersey City and making it in one area. So it's easily accessible for us, for everyone, and for the public. And it's something that we really need. All, yeah, all, catalog all cultural information, including historic places in the city, public art, all the monuments around the city, um, venues that are available for use, artists that live here and work here.
I mean, they
It could.
They have this store up there, they have all the history.
Well, they have a lot of it, so they would be tapped into this commu-, um, it's like a cultural, I forget what they call it, but it would be like a committee that would then have public meetings to collect all this information, so that it's all now in one area. Yes, the library has a lot of historic information there. So they would be useful in collecting all of the information into one spot. The final product would be a database, and then we would, um, set up to update every year, every six months, over and over again, it would be a dynamic database.
Is the grant already done?
It's not done, it's applied for the February 1st. Mm-hmm. Sure. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Got Bob Magro?
Good evening, all. First one is 10L. This is a yearly contract renewal with Microsystems New Jersey. And Microsystems is one of two companies in the state of New Jersey who are charged with maintaining what's called the MOD 4 Tax Assessment Database. So one company is Microsystems, the other one is Vital. Uh, we've been dealing with Microsystems for years. It's a small contract, it's $10,000, 10,600 for the software maintenance, 10,600 for the maintenance of the Unix server that the software runs off. And the tax assessor, tax collector are the primary users of this application. Then 10M is a contract renewal with Verizon for data circuits. And, uh, we have been slowly whittling this down over the years. You know, on a yearly basis, we've been charged with bringing our operating budgets down like 10% per year. And we've been able to eliminate redundancies in terms of the circuits we've been using. We've been able to get better pricing, and in a lot of instances, we've been able to replace Verizon circuits that we're currently using with either circuits from other vendors that are less expensive or by using wireless services rather than actually using a circuit that has a recurring cost attached to it. So I guess, you know, a few years ago, this contract was in the million-dollar range. Uh, it's now down to 600,000, and will probably get smaller. Uh, as we move to the new data center at Linden Avenue, we're going to be implementing some other technologies there, which will bring these costs down further.
On the radio the last few days, New York City has been having a monstrous problem with Verizon on something like what you're talking about. Have you paid attention to that?
Uh, well, I haven't really seen that one, but you know, the unfortunate reality with Verizon is they're the 800-pound gorilla. They're kind of an un, uh, non-accountable corporate organization on a number of different levels. Uh, they're, they're kind of monopolistic, it's like most of the cabling that's out there that all the other vendors run their service over is owned by Verizon. So, you know, we try to keep on top of them, make sure that they're not gouging us, and if we can, find less expensive ways to go.
Okay, Sammy? I should check into it, Paul.
I don't think so. No.
You know, last year, we hired consulting company, actually evaluated our form bills and so and so.
Yes.
That company actually looked into this one too?
Yes. And they're, they're part of this, and we've been bringing our costs down over the years, because they've been finding a lot of savings uh, in the Verizon billing system. It's, it's very difficult to decipher or clearly understand how it works. And they've found us a lot of billing errors and savings for the city.
If I'm wrong, please correct me, I think we paid last year the company close to $300,000 consulting fee.
For what?
For the, looking to our phone spend, I mean, the, yeah.
No, it's, it, the base charge for that audit company is like 48K per year, you know, plus commissions for whatever they, uh, they realize in savings, so, you know, I think it's only going as, as high as 100K for them, that's, that's the most.
Yeah.
I think I found more than that. So do me a favor, can I give you so last year how much we paid the consulting company for the job? And how much we saved?
Uh, yeah, well, I have a resolution that's probably going to be on the next council agenda to renew the contract with this auditing company. And at that time, they'll be in to actually give you a report and explain to you all the savings they've realized for the city. Yeah, not a problem. Uh, 10N is a contract with H and L Systems, they're the company that provides the city with its tax collection software and also the software for the city's financial system.
Questions?
Uh, 10Y is a con- contract with CDW Government. And what that contract is for is what's called Cisco SmartNet Service. We have a lot of Cisco network switches citywide. And in order to make sure that these switches work uninterrupted, we have a maintenance contract that we do on a yearly basis with Cisco, where not only do they do troubleshooting on the switches, if they have issues, if the switch fails, they will replace it for us under warranty. And it's extremely important to the extent that the switches really drive all the operations of the computer networks and the phone networks in the City of Jersey City. Without those switches operating properly, no phone service, no email, no internet, any of that. So for this particular contract, I think the renewal is like in the 46K range, you know, which is well worth it for the amount of switches that we currently have. Now 10Z is for the purchase of what is called Cisco Call Managers. And the city phone system that's currently used by the non-uniform portion of the city is what is called Cisco Voice Over IP Technology. Basically, voice over IP phones run on the same wires as the data systems that we use. You realize economies in scale in terms of using the same cabling, both for voice and data. And the other capability that Cisco Voice Over IP Systems provide the city is they give you monitoring tools to actually see what your call volumes are. You know, they have call centers that can actually see how productive city employees are in terms of the volumes of calls that they take, how many are answered, things of that nature. And it can be used as a real productivity tool for managers to actually, you know, see how productive city employees are. So this particular, the reason for this particular contract and this purchase is that our old Cisco Call Managers are at end of life and need to be replaced. And given that we're going to be moving to a new data center at 13 Linden, it seemed like an opportune time to upgrade and go to the newer technology, which will be installed at Linden Avenue.
Yes, this cost is $250,000. Include equipment and the software and installation service.
And the licenses. It's like the software that runs on those call managers, they're really file servers. There are licenses that have to be purchased from Cisco. The contract also includes the installation. It also includes the warranty.
Involves, so they have any maintenance, yearly maintenance charges involved in the future?
Yeah, the software is also covered under the Cisco SmartNet contract, which is the previous contract, 10Y. Yeah, that's all covered under SmartNet. I'm sorry? It's all, it's all one maintenance contract for both hardware and software. Okay, it is included. Yes. Now, I think there were a couple of late items that came to the council. One was the renewal of the city's Centrix Telephone Service. And this is Verizon's old technology, which we are gradually phasing out. Once we're all Cisco Voice Over IP and we move to more modern data circuits to feed our Voice Over IP phone system, we will probably not need Centrix any longer. Yeah, yeah, and some locations are still using it.
Also the clinics?
Yeah, yeah. Again, this is another example of we've been slowly whittling this contract down as well. I think we're less than 500 Centrix lines left. And they're all going to be ported over to what are called PRIs or SIP trunks, which are the more modern technology, which will ultimately replace Centrix.
There's a price difference between whether we dial with 10 digits versus 4 digits?
Yeah, well, I mean, what we have is what are called PRIs right now with the Centrix feature, which we pay a premium for. When we move to the new data center at Linden Avenue, all of that is going away and the costs will be substantially reduced. I would think probably will be like 100K savings per year. And then the final item, late item. Oh, two more, never mind.
Resolution authorizing what, contract with Jersey Business Systems?
Okay, yeah, that one. Yeah, not a problem. The Pershing Field Recreation Facility currently is connected to the city network using an unlicensed radio frequency, which causes some real performance issues on their PCs. And anytime they have to get internet access or, you know, access their email, they can run into some issues. We spoke to the folks up there. We spoke to the vendor. We're going to upgrade them to a licensed, FCC licensed, private radio frequency and upgrade their radio equipment. And I think, you know, part of the motivation in getting this done and doing this is, you know, we have an expectation, if the weather ever gets warmer again, to, there are going to be a lot more activities at Pershing Field and they're going to have a greater reliance on having a reliable data service to access the internet and to do other things up there. Right, and we can also, this will also allow us to put them on the same phone system as the rest of the city. You mean in terms of staff? Yeah, I mean, it's, the ice rink is there, they got the pool there. No, no, no.
We're paying $57,000. I brought this up at the agenda meeting. So, paying $57,000 to wire. What's that?
It varies depending upon the season.
Whether it's one or two, they have to communicate if something goes wrong. They have to be able to get in touch with anybody. Somebody has to be able to get in touch with them, right? So it doesn't make a difference, it doesn't, right? It's about, it's a safety issue more than anything, to me. Somebody has to communicate if something go wrong.
And one of the things that Bob Kay and I have spoken about is not only were we looking to upgrade at that location, we're also looking to upgrade at the Bethune Center as well. And as part of the upgrade at Bethune, we're also going to be looking to put internal wireless service at the Bethune for a lot of the functions that they perform. So, you know, it is, it does seem on the face of it a little pricey. But basically, we're bringing all of the city facilities into line with one type of technology and making sure that, you know, you're going to have reliable service between all of the facilities.
And we're also talking about putting a hard surface on the ice rink so it could be used 12 months out of the year. So it's not, you know, the winter season, they can put the other surface on there so they can roll the rink. Yeah, so it'll be used a lot more often. The track is on the drawing board, Councilman. Yes, for Pershing Field, yes. No, no, no. It's part of this year's, part of the process for this year's Pershing Field improvements.
I'm going to tell you, Little League in downtown, has everything except the ice skating rink, there's no phone service in that park whatsoever, zero, at all. And why can't...
We don't, we don't city staff assign that.
City staff?
You have city staff assigned to the...
Who?
Yes, you do. Parks and Forest has one, two, three, four guys assigned there.
We have people running programs out of Pershing Field. You know, in the community center, we have people, people actually assigned there from recreation staff organizing programs.
Well, I'm saying some programs as well in that park, too. And there is no communication there. What say somebody gets hurt, you know, there's no communication, there's no phone system.
Doesn't Little League have its own phone service?
No.
I mean, I remember, I remember when I was part of College of the League, you know, they had their own phone service, we paid our own phone bills.
Yeah, they have zero service. I know that from our college.
Resolution 15-110. It's a resolution authorizing award of a contract with Ocean Computer Group for the infrastructure, equipment and services on the state contract with the Department of Administration.
You've heard Bob mention the new data center several times in his presentation tonight. So just so the council knows what's going on. Our current data center is located at Journal Square. Our lease at Journal Square expires this spring. So we are relocating the staff there. We're not, they're not renewing the lease. We are moving a majority of our employees to the Parking Authority Building. You know, we are, you know, the architect is currently preparing the construction documents. And then we're going to, you know, bid it out and then we'll do new construction of all the office space at 394 Central Avenue, where everyone will go to that building sometime, probably by August, September. With the exception of the IT Division. We didn't want to put the IT Division in an older building. We figured it'd be best to put them in a state-of-the-art building. You know, has all the infrastructure in place. So the Municipal Services Complex, brand new building, just opened it, has the room, a lot of room. So, you know, this resolution is to help build a new data center that we're going to need to keep our operations up and going.
It's all this little... Questions?
One more, do you call up?
The last one, it didn't have a designation, which will be 10Z 13, resolution 15-111. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Jersey City to execute a cooperative pricing agreement through the National Cooperative Purchasing Agreement.
Yeah, just to go back to what I was talking about before in terms of trying to find sticks to beat with Verizon with in order to get better pricing, this is one of the sticks. Verizon gave us some pricing for circuits for the new data center. They are higher than what we would be willing to pay. So we are looking at Comcast as a competitor to Verizon to possibly give us circuits that are more price cost-effective for the city. Joining this cooperative will allow us to acquire circuits via Comcast through this purchasing cooperative. Thank you, Bob.
I don't ever hear, no.
You're just here for the farmers market? Here for the farmers market or something else? The what? Senior first, okay. Did everyone get this?
So there's a couple, yeah, so 3F is the farmers market ordinance. And then there's also one of the resolutions, very quickly, if we wanted to get that one knocked out first, it's 10Z six. Okay, all right. So, starting with, sorry. Oh, Margaret DiVico, Jersey City Health and Human Services. So, we are, oh, please, go ahead.
Of the farmers market ordinance. And you should have gotten the memo today that describes or summarizes some of the changes that Peter Basso from my office prepared. Does anyone need extra copies of the memo? So Margaret will speak to what the changes are and, folks, what's that? What's the question? This is a new ordinance from what was tabled previously.
So the other one was tabled?
The other one was tabled. No, this is a new ordinance. New ordinance. We can take it off and vote it off.
We clean it up generally annually, but we can clean it up after we do this one.
So just as some background, so after it was tabled, the Department of Health and Human Services, and Margaret can speak more about that, is they held some meetings with market managers at different farmers markets, as well as the SIDs. Particularly the SIDs with regard to, they felt their input in the business districts, considering their inputs with regard to that, including Central Avenue, Journal Square, Jackson Hill, who else was, McKinley Square, downtown SID as well. I said Central Avenue. So all the SIDs had input with regard to that, as well as the Hudson County Chamber of Commerce. And then there was a series of meetings after they kind of took their input, where myself along with the Law Department and Health and Human Services, met with all the stakeholders, had two meetings to iron out some of the proposed changes. Not everyone's happy with everything, but that's probably the hallmark of good legislation, that not everyone's happy at the end of the day. And I'll turn it over to Margaret to kind of talk about what's before you.
So I think we all remember the farmers market ordinance from 2014. So we, so there was some unhappiness with that. So we revisited it with the parties that the council president mentioned, as well as the Parks Coalition. We remember, they came to the council meeting where it was tabled and expressed their unhappiness. So we heard everybody's concerns. And so the changes that were made to, I guess, the previous version aren't outrageous. And it's actually pretty similar to the version that was introduced last summer. Or I guess it was fall. So the, we're still creating a definition of a farmers market for the City of Jersey City, and we find that important. It's still going to require farmers markets to have mostly fruit and vegetable vendors. What we are stipulating in this new version of the ordinance is that for markets that would like to be located within an SID, that the SID must run the market or, you know, give an outside group permission to operate within their SID. They thought that was really important. And, you know, obviously the downtown SID already runs the downtown farmers market, so that's fine for them. Journal Square, it's going to be a different issue. Don Smart wants to run the Journal Square Farmers Market. So this will make it so that he would be required to do so. And it's, so that's a change from the previous version. And really, it's just, there's a few more specific definitions. So we define what a district management corporation is. We define what an open profit is. We define what a mobile voo vendor is, what a health officer is, just so that later on in the ordinance, it's clear what we're talking about when we say, you know, the health officer shall or the district management corporation shall. You know, it's all defined. So it's much more specific and clear in the letter of the law now than the previous version was. There's still, we're creating a farmers market season. And then the rest of the provisions are the same. April 1st through December 31st. So it's a large chunk of the year.
Stuck out to me was, so there was, I guess, the parks are completely opened up except for one exclusion.
Yes.
And I just, I'd like to understand that better because the last time we talked about exclusion for that area, I think the council felt pretty strongly that we weren't going to have special rules. We talked about exchange place, that we weren't going to have special rules for one place. And this kind of breaks that. And I'd like to have a consistent way of thinking about these things.
Well, actually, this is a key thing that...
John worked with us, and Joanne, if you want to kind of jump in on this one. Due to the open space agreement, there's not enough actual space on Owen Grundy Pier, which is considered a park. And so it's part of the park, the network of parks that, when originally we went through it, we had some like, don't exclude anything. And when we realized that that was actually one of the places that the federal government suggests we not do this work and that's what John came back to us with.
There's an easement that has to be run along that park and has to have access to everyone in the public at all times. So you can't coordinate off and do the things you do with the...
Yeah, understood. I would just wonder if there would be, rather than putting specific things, like naming, like start naming things in there if you don't have, whatever the thing is that makes that not viable, putting that language in there so that it's expandable, it's keener legislation.
Like this is specifically a farmer's...
Like, this is specifically a farmer's market ordinance, so it's saying.
Yes. If I bring it around tomorrow, which, does it follow automatically, or does it not? Maybe it shouldn't, if it, if it has the same stuff that makes it here not accessible, it probably shouldn't, so I'm just saying that we should, you know what I'm saying.
Well, if it was, if there was a new park that was created, this ordinance would stipulate that somebody wishing to open a farmer's market within that park would not only have to come to the Department of Health and Human Services for a permit, but would also have to go to the Division of Parks and Forests for a permit as well, and they would be the determinant.
That's not what she's saying.
Yeah, okay.
Instead of saying Grundy Pier, then you say a park that has no easement or whatever. Do you understand?
Yeah, I understand. Okay. Makes sense.
Other questions related to the ordinance?
Did a good job. Put your efforts.
What are you smoking tonight?
It'd take a while, but I'm so glad, so, you know, I heard that every party's happy.
Yeah, it's, probably, it's true. We didn't think that would happen, but it did.
Yes.
So, yeah, this is the final result of that, and I'm very happy that it came off the table and it's back, and it isn't, like, languishing, so that's, I'm, I think we're all pleased. And then the next one that I'm here to speak about.
You know, when you're voting for that, then you're voting against Friends of the Loews being able to run a farmer's market, and that was the original issue that we came up against with the Journal Square sit.
Yeah, they have to work with.
I, I'm just, that's how, I just want to, even know that.
I'm just saying, after.
I just wanted to be very clear.
How long you, we're going to get these provisions, ask everyone for their support, a lot of folks work really hard, the Health Department and the Law Department, and Peter Aide, thank you so much, and I think it, again, really meets a lot of the, everyone's concerns across different stakeholders and so forth, so I'm sure there'll be folks who'll come to the meeting, and then asking it to, to still consider supporting this legislation and moving it through to, to second reading. Okay, thank you.
The second item that I'm, that I'm here to speak about is ten Z six. This is a resolution, it's, it's, it's very much a formality, and it's just allowing representatives from the Department of Health and Human Services, specifically public health nurses that work in the lead prevention clinic, to perform blood lead testing onboard the formerly Carepoint, Carepoint Health, now the Hudson Hospital Mobile Health Unit. It's like a big retrofitted RV that has essentially an examination room in it, it's like a mobile doctor's office, so what would happen is that van goes to different public health fairs and places of employment throughout Hudson County, and this just is making, ensuring any of our employees that go to do blood lead testing on the van while it's parked and stationary, we're not driving the van, we're not on the van while it's moving, letting them do blood lead testing, which consists of a finger prick and a quick on-the-spot, you know, test. So that's, it's just insuring us against anything that might go wrong, so that's what that resolution's all about.
Any questions on Z six? No, you have none?
That's it?
Unless the director wants to talk about.
Where would you run it, ten Z seven, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Ten Z seven is eight Z seven.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the items that were handed out, not on your printed agenda.
Yeah, there's a composite. From senior nutrition, and Larry's on vacation, so we want to wait for him to come back so he can.
Who else we have?
John, John, you here for something?
Yeah, come on up, come on up. Sorry to keep you.
Which one, John? Solar power? Solar power, oh, solar power. It's H, ten H, ten H, council.
Everyone, it's ten H, next item is ten H.
Amendment to a contract.
This is amending the.
Resolution authorizing the city to amend to the solar power energy service. Ten H, as in Harry.
And we have Michael Conti here from Sunex, and he can answer any questions. Amendment to a contract approved by the council.
There are a couple of things in the amendment, namely, we applied for grant funding from the Board of Public Utilities, and in the amendment, we're offering to share whatever earnings that we get from that, hope that's well received. Additionally, there is a clarification on the size of the battery that accompanies the solar system, which we typically would have added in an amendment towards the completion of the project, but since we were submitting this amendment for the BPU, for the BPU grant, we figured we'd consolidate that and spend less time here, and there's some clarification around indemnification language, which was originally misconstrued in the, in the original signed document.
Any questions?
Sorry to keep you waiting, Tom. Thanks. George Garcia?
Councilman, George Garcia, I have a couple of items here that I came to answer any questions the council may have. Item three, D and E, there are two franchise ordinances. As it relates to item E, I met with the community and Councilwoman Osborne to discuss it. This is a franchise for essentially existing loading docks and a canopy that intrudes onto the right-of-way in, on a historic building. My client is in the process of restoring the historic building, they've received approvals from the Historic Committee, from planning, we've dealt with the community on the placement of artwork, and with it, there's going to be several infrastructure improvements, meaning sidewalks, more pedestrian-friendly, the property is located by the BJ's, if anyone's familiar. So, that's what we're here, we're here seeking the franchise to permit the dock, a portion of the dock and the canopy to intrude over the, over the right-of-way. So we've met with the councilwoman and, and the, and the community on it.
Sideboard is total only fifty foot wide.
Fifteen, not the fifty, fifteen foot wide. Is that right?
Sure, the sidewalk will be governed by the Power Heart's archestrategic plan, so I believe it's either fifteen or twenty feet.
Okay, but fifteen, when I see the diagram. And the step?
Six step, five by ten, so they're going to be five foot, going to stick it out to the sidewalk. As long as you hold on danger.
You're talking, you're talking about a different, you're, you're, he's got, he's here for two things, he's actually talking about E first.
I'm talking about E.
Oh, E.
Which is the warehouse.
Everything's existing, right? I apologize.
And now go back to D. But he hasn't spoken to it, he hasn't spoken to it yet, so he needs a.
Who's goes?
So three B, I'll let my, I'll let my associate talk.
Okay.
Good evening, Tom Lane, Genova Burns. I'm here to discuss a franchise ordinance for a stoop for one thirty-three and a half Morgan Street. This is a four-story, single-family home, it's three stories above a two-car garage, we are here requesting a five-by-ten stoop with six steps leading up to the front door of the entrance. It's a fairly simple and very small franchise ordinance, if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
As I said, you know, sideboard is only fifty foot long wide, now, we talk about five foot, going to stick it out to the sideboard, my concern is that liability insurance. Okay, so now, you're going to have liability insurance provide, I think, how much is it, two million dollars? Fine, two million dollars sounds great at this moment, but you're going to get there ninety-nine years, so now, ninety years later, two million dollars, probably worth a hundred thousand dollars now, so somehow, that liability insurance, two million dollars for the ninety-nine years, is not right. Somehow, we got to have to be built up to some kind of rules, if you have ninety-nine years, you know, easement, they should have, every ten years, we should be evaluating what we have to be changed at the liability amount.
Like, can we just adjust it automatically for inflation?
Somehow, we have to do that, because, as I say, ninety-nine years, two million dollars, worse maybe a hundred thousand dollars now.
Two million dollars is what was prescribed. To us by the clerk, I don't know if there's a different number that could.
So somehow, council, office council, it's a risk management.
Look at it and see what they think, maybe there's a way to put some sort of escalator in it.
I think it's a fair point, like, a lot of times we set, like, it's not specific to this, but a lot of times we set fees, and then, like, the next year, the fees are already on a date, because we have inflation.
So somehow, we have to be, office and council, we have to be adjusted.
For his recommendation, and see if maybe an escalator can go in.
Soon is that, yeah, this is just the first reading, so second reading, before we second reading, we're going to come up somewhere, you know, so we can amend it.
Well, we should do the amendments before the first reading, right, or at the stage of. Oh, it's not, okay, cool, okay.
About whether, I'm just trying to make sure we have the appropriate amount of insurance.
Okay, okay.
You understand, right? Okay, good, thank you.
The title of franchise ordinance?
Right.
Yeah, it's actually on the, on the agenda there.
It's in parentheses, it's not on the agenda?
Oh, it's at the bottom, it's at the bottom, but it could be, we could put it at the top.
Oh, here, right here.
You have to change the actual document and stuff.
That's why we put it on the bottom. Are we still good?
Good, good.
All right, from the top.
Can we put newspaper reporters up there and throw them out?
Yeah, from the top.
All right, item three A, it's ordinance fifteen zero one two. Any questions on the street name changes?
Is the council president on it?
No, this is in reference to Washington Park, where they asked to add in the city of properties, yeah, that's all.
Okay, item three B, from my understanding, administration is withdrawing that.
I would like to just give my colleagues a heads up on what it is, so that they're ready when, when it does come out. So there are several instances, Airbnb is a good example, vacation rental by owner, there's several instances where essentially people are using their homes as a hotel.
Many, many, that is the problem.
Yeah, and Jersey City, and it's, we don't, we don't receive, yeah, for the Super Bowl it happened, et cetera, the City of Jersey City is missing out on a lot of tax revenue because there's.
I agree, a hundred percent, yeah.
So there's, like, for example, on Airbnb, there's a thousand listings, so that's a thousand people that should be paying the hotel, you know, and those things turnover, you know, on a daily, weekly basis, that aren't paying the hotel taxes, so the intent of this is to kind of create the structure, making sure that those folks get folded in and start paying taxes, I know that some of the providers, such as Airbnb, if, if your laws, you know, are kind of worded that way, will, they'll pass through the taxes for you, they'll charge it to the guest, the out-of-state guest, automatically, and pass that through as revenue to the city, so that's the intention, but it's not ready, the legislation's just not quite ready yet.
Let me ask, when you say not ready, what reason is not ready, what is the item bothering you?
Specifically?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, just, just, just understand.
I can question, are you going to police it this and all that stuff?
All right, and how, and.
Yeah.
So.
Can we, all right.
They're going to figure it out, and we'll get back to this.
So that's exactly why I don't think it's ready, because we don't have a mechanism for enforcement and process that way, that's exactly why.
You know what, actually, when I see that this, you know, ordinance, I was, it's right things, because, you know, hotel, people live at the hotel, they have to pay hotel taxes, but I see hundreds of units in downtown Jersey City, that's the way they do part of like a commercial business.
Yeah.
Because a lot of investor purchase units, they cannot find that they're monthly tenant or whatever, it's a regular tenant.
Yeah.
So now they change to hotel, rent to room, I see there's so many.
Yeah.
You know, it's not fair, actually, to the people who have to pay taxes, so, I hope, I hope this is not, you withdraw.
Oh, no, 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 so literally, I asked for this last week, and it was, like, on the agenda, and I haven't even seen it yet, so, like, what, like, so it was, it was, it was a case of very responsive folks, but it's just, I just don't think it's ready yet, until we just make sure we have the plan for how do people, so, for example, Airbnb, they collect it for you and pass it through, what about for people that don't do that? What's their process, how do they file it, like, we just need to understand how we're going to handle it, but I think it's, I mean, it's a really good idea.
Listen, we have so many genius people, work the law department, and the BA jobs everywhere, I'm pretty sure they come over sometimes, amazing, like that.
Wait, we got it. On the TV? It introduced, probably within a month, I just want to make sure we have the operational things now.
Okay, I hope it's not, this is not, withdrew by certain special interest group.
No, this was me.
Good, thank you very much, next.
Okay, the rest of the first readings were touched on for any.
Three C through three F. Second reading's three A, four A, four B, four. Excuse me, I'm saying three A, correct, four A, four B was touched on, four E and G. Any questions?
Okay, yes, I have a question. I come using out of the second reading regarding clause, issue bond.
Right, they're not, they're not. Next meeting.
Next meeting, but before we be a next meeting, you know, I was really questioning, last, this ordinance is one five oh seven, that's the school bond, and the one five oh eight is a general bond, was there. So now, last year, December twenty-third, we issued thirty-one million dollars at the bond, at the time, there was an interest rate is five percent till two thousand twenty-three, and after that, three percent to two thousand twenty-seven, there was a bond rate was months and a half, almost months and a half is only five percent, the five percent was it, but now, bond, we tried to refinance it, my concern is that the school bond is a four percent till two thousand twenty-five, four point one twenty-five is till two thousand twenty-six, and the four point twenty-five till two thousand twenty-seven, so, old bond we have, interest far lower than what we issued bond months and a half ago, so, I'm a little dumb, please excuse me, how they going to be save the bond for the, through the refinancing, that's my concern, how?
First of all, we can only do this if we can demonstrate a three-and-a-half percent savings, if the market conditions aren't right, then we can't do it. The ordinances that were going before you are asking us for the opportunity to do it, but when the time comes, if the market's not right, we won't be able to do it, so, I mean, this is, when this was brought to your attention, the market conditions were ripe for this action, but the market is changing as we speak, so it may not, when local finance entertains this on Wednesday, and the council hears it later in February, the rates may not be what they are, so we may not do anything at all, may not be, have the authority to do anything at all.
So, you request the local finance board for the, ask permission for the refinancing.
The state local finance board has to approve it.
Can I have a copy of that letter, what you sent to the company? Yeah, application, can I have that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions in the second reading?
Hearing none, let's go to resolutions.
Ten A is a resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriation, we had to replace it on that.
Just adding grants to the budget.
Okay, ten B was touched on earlier, ten C is a resolution authorizing refund credit of three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-eight cents, and a reduction in assessment to settle tax appeal filed by a property owner at forty Constitution Way. Ten D is a resolution authorizing the execution of a mortgage subordination agreement affecting the property known as one zero eight Myrtle Avenue, AKA block two three two zero two, lot fifty-two. Ten E is a resolution amending.
We're withdrawing this.
We're withdrawing that, sorry.
Why would one education?
Ten E?
Ten E's being withdrawn.
What's going on here? We're withdrawing ten, because the person who's going to speak to it, it can't be here, and when, when the person is. Why is one education want to be withdrawn from this grant?
So we're not, we're not sure the person who's going to speak to that is not here, when they're.
When they're here, we'll entertain the issue. Okay?
We're withdrawing it.
10F was touched on earlier. 10G is a resolution authorizing private sale of a city fire truck to the city of Benabides, Argentina. 10H was touched on earlier. 10I is a resolution authorizing the closing of municipal streets at Williams Place, beginning noon and ending 8:00 PM, Saturday, June 6, 2015, rain day to Sunday, June 7, 2015, at the request of the Learning Community Charter School for the purpose of a community fair. 10J is a resolution authorizing the closing of municipal streets, 6th Street from Division Street to Newark Avenue, beginning 1:00 PM and ending 8:00 PM, Sunday, March 15, 2015, at the request of the Ferry Street Boys LLC for the purpose of a St. Patrick's Day parade celebration. 10K is a resolution authorizing the execution of a license agreement allowing the city of, the Jersey City Free Public Library to use spaces, space in City Hall to conduct English as a second language citizenship and conversation classes for the public, for the public benefit. 10L, M and N were touched on earlier. 10O is a resolution.
Withdrawn. O through S, we're withdrawn.
I'm sorry?
10O through.
10S, all public safety maintenance contracts, we are withdrawing from this council meeting.
Can I have, withdraw, right? But can I see something? Withdraw, they're going to bring back.
Bring back.
Okay.
Director Shea was not available. Deputy Director Calla was under the weather and there was still some questions the administration had that weren't answered to our satisfaction.
And especially when we do hire the consulting company for the service, you know, like we give the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. I like to have, when it come up, especially this one, when they, when they come to City Council, I like to have 2013 and 14 service record, you know, by each item. Because especially GTB and company going to get $1.34 million non-public bid. It's a whole lot of money to give to some company for 100, $1.34 million without public bid. It's something wrong somewhere. And when I read it, the scope of work, I myself, I'm questioning, really, is worth that kind of money? Number two, there, one of the items is that, what are they called, that mobile computer for the police?
Mobile data computer.
Whatever they call it, I'm not sure that. I got complaint when I actually interviewed a lot of police officer, they're complaining, their mobile computer, since they installed, beginning of the install, till today, a lot of computers not working. So I like to know also, I like to miss, how many we have a mobile computer we have, how many is working, how many pieces is not dysfunction? Because the way we give company, you know, that their amount, $1.34 million, I like to know, really, service scope of work, service record, and all the mobile computer, how many pieces we have, how many is working, how many dysfunction? I like to have, okay?
They worked well when I was the chief.
Working good?
It works well when I was the chief.
Because, yeah, it was them. This is not, it seems like.
He's just saying.
Quick question. Now, I might be, this is, I just have to ask this question. I understand what, what Councilman you're going to say, but not having this, this thing go out to bid, if we put it out to bid, would it, would it pose some sort of an interruption, you know, in the service, you know?
Part of the problem, a lot of these maintenance contracts are related to proprietary software. So the, these companies have the source code to the, for lack of a better term, to the technology that another vendor doesn't have. So if we went out to bid, we would probably have to start the infrastructure from scratch.
Yeah, for your jeopardizing safety a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, the, they're still performing the service even though we haven't awarded the contract yet. So don't, don't worry about that. I won't say jeopardizing anyone's safety at this point because the service is still being provided. You're just, if to start the infrastructure from scratch, you might be an initial outlay, outlay much greater than what these contracts are worth.
So reasons that.
No, really, I'm really upset about the, you know, this. When the police and the public safety come up, present this one, make sure he will prepare for.
I already told them that, Councilman. I know you're ready for them.
No, I'm really ready for that, okay?
Oh, boy, you well now.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm not happy. You know, first.
I just have one question or just a clarification. We can't really go out to bid with these contracts because it's just like having Microsoft. If you have Microsoft, you have to ask Microsoft's permission or they're the ones that do whatever.
We can't go out to bid on these systems as they're currently constituted.
That's we understand.
Right. Or we're charged. And the building that provides services, what we're looking for.
Fair question.
Yes.
Right? Isn't that the, didn't we discuss that before, that they sort of base their price because they know that they're the only ones we can use? Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Because of that, because of the, they cannot provide the, from their job right, there's something wrong.
Right. I mean, that's why we really need a true technology officer within public safety that could oversee the needs of what that, that building needs.
We, yeah.
We do, we did.
It was, the job was in.
You hit it right.
Okay, what's next?
10Z, 10Z was touched on earlier. 10Z. Resolution authorizing award of a contractor, gold-type business machine, the purpose and installation of Panasonic tough pads and accessories under state contract for Department of Public Works, excuse me, Department of Public Safety Fire Division. 10Z2 is a resolution authorizing award of a contract to Millennium Communications, the network interrogation maintenance service under GSA contract for Office of Emergency Management Homeland Security funded through fiscal year 2014 Urban Area Security Initiative Grant. 10Z3 is a resolution authorizing award of a contract to Millennium Communications for the purchase and installation of Cisco BOIP phone system under state contract for the Office of Emergency Management Homeland Security funded through the fiscal year 2013 Urban Area Security Initiative.
Let me ask for Z1.
Director, yes.
Okay. This is same company, as I said. This is a same company.
Same concept.
Yeah, gold-type business machines, the same company, it's a part of that. No, yes.
This one's under state contract.
Yes, a state contract.
They did a procurement process with the state.
Yes, but now, this company provide 40 piece of mobile and installation and the software. Their maintenance is a separate, with the total price of 40,000, including the maintenance.
The first year, it's on the warranty, year two.
They'll fall into one of those maintenance contracts that are on hold right now.
See, that's why I asked you that. This council, although they're to, you know, make a contract with a certain computers, it gives the software, once we get those piece, we stop. So whatever they ask for maintenance, we got no way to go because they do say source code of this debt. So I like to know, half of the time, this is a company going to be, I mean, this is contract, going to be $20,000 if you want to shop for maintenance. After that, they should provide this council, after they finished it, how much will be maintenance cost? They should have to provide because why? Every year, how much will be? What I do as a, as a president of Central Minnesota Society, when we make a hire, holiday line installation, I never go out for one year's contract. I always say, give us a five years price. So we can compare as a different company, how much will be over the five years. So now, this company is the only one, maybe, but I'm scared a little bit, how much will be, they're going to charge for maintenance and maintenance, yearly maintenance. Because 40 piece, the way the company charge, it's going to be not true. So they should provide yearly maintenance costs also, not only just equal yourself. I don't want to stop with the company.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
10Z4 to 10Z6 were touched on earlier. 10Z7 is being withdrawn. 10Z8, 10Z9 were touched on. 10Z10 is resolution recognizing Frank R. Conwell PS3 Tigers for establishing February 12, 2015 as the Jam World Record Day as councilperson we've ever alluded to earlier. 10Z11 is a resolution rejecting all proposals received by the city of Jersey City on November 25, 2014 for a contract known as e-ticketing services. 10Z12.
Rejecting all proposals. For e-ticketing, currently have a system where the two bids came back and possible comparison.
With two different cost proposals. So the RFP has to be written a little bit more clearer. So the cost proposals are apples to apples.
And 10Z12 and 10Z13 were touched on earlier. Second, I have a motion to adjourn by Council person Holman and seconded by Councilperson Osborne. On the motion to adjourn by acclamation, everybody here, say aye. We are out of here at 7:22 PM. Good night.